Good morning. This hearing on the Committee of Agriculture, Food Waste, and From the Field to the Table will come to order. I've asked David Scott to open us with a prayer. David?
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before your throne of grace to first of all give thanks. We thank you for so many blessings you bestow upon us, blessings sometimes we do not even know. We thank you for your Holy Spirit that intercedes for us on our behalf. We thank you, dear Heavenly Father, for this hearing, for what could be more important than the food that we get on the table for needy people. And in this case, dear Heavenly Father, as we discuss the issue of food waste, we hope that you will implant within this committee our resolve to do as much as we can to eliminate the food waste, to help our farmers be able to have the labor to get food out of the fields and into the hands and at the tables of those people who need it most. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask this in your name, in the name of your Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, David. Well, good morning. Since I became Chairman of the House Agriculture at the beginning of last year, we've held more than seventy hearings and have invited a broad range of experts, including people in the field, to share their knowledge of everything from the futures markets to the farmers' markets. The committee doesn't agree all the time on every issue, but one of the reasons we're able to work in a bipartisan manner is that we remember well-meaning people can have different ideas about how to achieve the same goal, whatever the issue may be. Because we have a different way of getting there doesn't mean one of us is wrong and that this is sometimes, and this is something we lose sight of in America today. Good public policy is not a zero-sum game. If advocates, members, whoever it may be, are closed-minded and aren't unopened to compromise, it all but ensures retention of the status quo regardless of the issue. An example of where we engage in a variety of stakeholders is in the review of food waste. I commend my colleague from Maine, Shelley Fingery, for putting this on the congressional radar. Today's hearing may be the first time the House Agriculture Committee is publicly engaging on this issue, but it will not be our last. Forty percent of the food grown in the country is wasted. That amounts to one hundred and thirty-three billion pounds of food wasted. That's a billion with a B. Considering we have about forty-five million people consuming, or forty-five million people receiving food assistance through SNAP, I believe this is a tremendous opportunity for us to take a closer look at our food chain and figure out a way to ensure that food grown in this country reaches the dinner table and not the trashcan. Speaking two weeks ago at the Food Waste Summit, Secretary Velsack commented that avoiding food waste loss could save U.S. families on average fifteen hundred dollars a year, and limiting food waste globally could help prevent hunger and malnourishment in eight-hundred-and-twenty-five to eight-hundred-and-fifty million people worldwide who are not getting adequate food. Tackling food waste in this country is and should be a nonpartisan issue that will be most successful by engaging everyone in the food chain from the field to the table. It will take the collaboration of all stakeholders to be successful. As we begin this review, we will undoubtedly identify issues that seem easy to resolve yet are more complex than they appear. We will likewise identify other issues that have already been addressed but simply require collaboration, and what amounts to a public relations campaign to raise awareness. Two such issues that Congress has acted upon that we should highlight today are the recently enacted permanent tax deduction for food donations and the Good Samaritan Food Donation Act. The permanent tax deduction for food donations was identified in recent legislation and was enacted as part of the last omnibus. The second issue is one we hear an awful lot about, yet is addressed years ago by our former colleague and vice chair of the committee, the late Bill Emerson. Many businesses, when given the opportunity to donate perfectly safe and wholesome food, are reluctant because of liability concerns. The Bill Emerson Good Samaritan Food Donation Act enacted in nineteen ninety-six fully addresses this concern. I wish to place into the record a memorandum of opinion drafted by the Department of Justice for USDA General Counsel that not only spells out the direct protection of the Emerson Act, but also describes its preemptive effect on state laws that may not provide the same level of protection. When we began preparing for this hearing, we reached out to Representative Fingery, whom I am happy is here with us today, who shortly offers her introductory comments of her own. Witnesses that are invited represent a broad range of perspectives and expertise, but in no way represent the entirety of the community that is addressing this challenge. While this hearing is just one element of our review, we will also invite members and staff, as well as other interested stakeholders, to attend an event later this afternoon here in this hearing room on the balcony to see what some of the organizations are doing to address food waste. That event will begin at approximately one-thirty today. I would now recognize our ranking member, Mr. Heaton, for any opening remarks that he may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome to today's witnesses, Congressman Fingery. I appreciate your leadership on this issue. Welcome to the committee. I'm probably not the only one who finds the term "sell-by" and "best-buy" confusing. This confusion leads to a lot of food and waste that we see in this country, and I'm glad that we're looking at this issue today. American consumers are increasingly less connected to the farm and to where food comes from. And I think a lot of people no longer view food as valuable. When I was growing up, my mom used every part of the animal, but that's no longer the case, and food waste has increased. Producers have done such a good job of creating an abundant food supply that a lot of folks don't think twice about tossing out food that may not look perfect or has surpassed a best-buy or sell-buy date stamped on the box, whatever that means. This is a challenge, but I also think it presents a great opportunity for production agriculture. While many have no problem throwing food away, many Americans are still struggling to feed their families. There is a role for farmers and ranchers to play in this, and they can and should step up to the plate and help meet these needs. Again, I'm happy that we're beginning to explore this issue and look forward to a constructive conversation, because this is an area that we can work across party lines and forge a diverse coalition to tackle food waste in this country, so I look forward to the testimony and yield back.
Thanks, gentlemen. The Chair requests that other members submit their opening statements for the record so that our witnesses may begin their testimony to ensure there's ample time for questions. I'd like to welcome to our first panel, to the witness table, the Honorable Shelley Fingery from Congresswoman from the gray state of Maine. Ms. Fingery, you begin when you're ready.
Well, thank you very much, Chairman Conaway and to Ranking Member Peterson. I really appreciate that you're holding this hearing today and giving me the opportunity to say a few words about it, and I particularly appreciate that you remembered to call it "The Great State of Maine." So, obviously, this is an issue that people have been increasingly concerned about, and I've been very grateful to have a chance to work with it and, as all of you said, work across the aisle and with a whole diverse group of interests that are concerned about the fact that forty percent of the food, as you mentioned, is wasted in this country. Particularly, people on the Agriculture Committee know how much work goes into growing food, how much water is lost in the process of growing food, how long it has to be transported around the country, and just that gives you a sense of how much we are wasting besides the food in terms of energy and other resources in doing this. The other big concern is that we do have fifty million people in this country going hungry, and when there's confusion around date labeling or how food can be disposed of or the Good Samaritan laws that we've talked about, it just makes it that much more difficult for restaurants and retail stores to find out how to make sure that uneaten food and beyond-the-label food gets to those food banks and to those people in need. So, that's part of what we're proposing to look at in the bill that we submitted called the Food Recovery Act. It's wonderful to see that the USDA and the EPA together have announced a food reduction goal. They did that last year, and their goal is to reduce food waste by fifty percent by the year 2030. So, an ambitious goal, but I think also showing that there are great opportunities there. I'm fortunate enough to serve on the Agriculture Appropriations Subcommittee, so we've been looking for ways to work with them on funding areas that could make a difference in solving this problem and also work on some of the same things with the FDA. There's certainly no single way to go about solving this problem, and I know as you dig deeper into it today and you hear from the wonderful panel that you've chosen, you'll start to hear that it's something we have to face on all fronts, from helping consumers to understand differently, giving opportunities to farmers who want to make sure food gets into the right hands, and helping retailers in particular and restaurant owners to reduce that weight or to make sure it goes places that we want. In my own state, we have a supermarket chain that is also committed to zero food waste, which means making sure everything gets sold in the store that possibly can, even if some of it looks a little ugly or misshapen, then making sure it gets to food banks and places where people are in need, and finally, making sure that food that can't go anywhere else either goes to a composting facility or an anaerobic digester, because that's another big issue here, is most food waste ends up in municipal landfills. And for those of you who've served on municipal government, you know that's one of the increasing costs. It also produces methane gas, which is much more toxic than many other gases that we already worry about, whereas if it's converted to compost or anaerobic digestion, we're either left with wonderful-looking soil or we're producing energy with that food waste. So, making sure that there are federal funds available to municipalities who want to do that is another part of this and something that I think can certainly be dealt with in a variety of committees. Just in closing, I want to mention the one thing that Ranking Member Peterson and I were just talking about, and I'm sure all of you on the committee and most of us have experienced this problem, perhaps in your own household, where you look at a package, it's got a label on it, and think, okay, well, this is probably still good, we should eat it, yet someone else in your household looks at it and says, oh, no, no, look at that date, we've got to throw it away. We actually submitted a bill last week with Senator Blumenthal about date labeling to try to bring some sensibility into this, and because we hear so much about the domestic disagreements that go on, we thought we should call this the Domestic Harmony Bill to reduce some of those issues that people face. But basically, manufacturers have joined us. We were endorsed in that bill by Campbell Soup and Nestle's, and a variety of other companies have already come forward because they find it confusing, too. Basically, those labels, for the most part, don't have a uniform or scientific basis. They may represent something to that individual company, but it really doesn't mean you can't eat that food. So, our idea is to ask the USDA and the FDA to work together to create a label, one that says expires on, for those foods that really do have a safety issue and you should know when it's too late to eat it. And the other one would just say best diffused by. So, that tells you that that bag of crackers will be best if you eat it by a certain date, but nothing's going to happen to you if you eat it a month later or maybe even the next season when you return to your, you know, your summer cabin or you find it, you know, in a box that you never unpacked. Chances are, that's going to be perfectly good food. So, we'd like to bring some sensibility to that. It would be great for manufacturers. It would take some of the stigma out of how that food gets donated, and in fact, there are twenty states around the country that prohibit food donations if that date has passed. And if you think about it, we're keeping twenty states away from giving that food to people in need, and it's a completely arbitrary date. So, it seems like that's one of the ones that would be extremely cost-effective, it would create much less waste, something that most of us agree on, and you'll find most of the manufacturers and others agree on it as well. So, thank you very much for giving me a moment to open this up today. Thank you for taking on this topic. I look forward to working with you in any way I can, and thank you for giving me a little bit of nostalgia to return to the committee, which I served on in my early days and truly enjoyed working with all of you and being in this room.
Well, thank you, ma'am, for being here. Appreciate your comments this morning and for your leadership in getting this initiative started, and we'll look forward to pitching in with you on, I shouldn't say pitching in, but nevertheless, helping with reduction in food waste.
Be careful about that baseball stuff.
I got you. We're now transitioning to our second panel. Shelley, thank you very much for being with us today. I appreciate it. I'd like to welcome our second panel of witnesses to the table. We have Ms. Dana Gunders, Senior Scientist, Food and Agriculture Program, Natural Resources Defense Council, San Francisco, California. We have Mr. Jesse Fink, who's the Managing Director of Mission Point in Newark, Connecticut. We have Mr. John Oxford, President, CEO, L&amp;M Companies, Raleigh, North Carolina. We have Ms. Megan Stans, Senior Director of Sustainability, Grocery Manufacturers Association here in Washington, D.C. Ms. Diana Aved, CEO, Feeding America, Chicago, Illinois, and Ms. Emily Broadleeb, Director, Food Law Policy Clinic, Harvard Law School, Jamaica Plain, Massachusetts. Get everybody got their seats. All right. Ms. Gunders, if you'll begin when you're ready, ma'am.
Ranking Member Peterson and members of the committee, thank you for inviting me to testify today and being willing to explore this issue. My name is Dana Gunders. I'm a senior scientist at the Natural Resources Defense Council. I'm also the author of a widely cited report on food waste and a book called The Waste-Free Kitchen Handbook, which is a consumer guide to wasting less food. So, imagine walking out of the grocery store with five bags of groceries, dropping two in the parking lot, and not bothering to pick them up. Seems crazy, but that's essentially what we're doing today across the country where we're wasting forty percent of all of our food. We're leaving entire fields unharvested and eliminating produce solely for its looks. We're serving massive portions, throwing out food just because it's past its sell-by date, and eating out instead of what's in our fridge. Now imagine a farm that covers three-quarters of the state of California and uses as much water as California, Ohio, and Texas combined. When you harvest that farm, it's enough food to fill a tractor-trailer every twenty seconds, and then it drives all over the country, except instead of going to people to eat it, it goes straight to the landfill. That's essentially what we're doing today. In fact, food is the number-one product entering our landfills today. This is expensive. All told, America spends up to $218 billion, or 1.3% of GDP, each year on wasted food. Beyond money, we're wasting nutrition, more than 1,250 calories per capita every day. That's three times the caloric requirements of the entire food insecure population of the country. And we have not always been so wasteful. In the U.S., we waste fifty percent more food per capita than we did in the 1970s. This means that there was once a time when we wasted far less, and therefore gives me hope that we could get there again. Wasting less food is to the food sector as energy efficiency is to the energy sector, the cheapest, easiest way to meet growing demand. The U.N. projects increased demand will lead to a sixty percent growth in food production by 2050, and almost a quarter of that projected demand could be offset by addressing food waste. There are far too many causes of food waste to address in just a few short minutes, but I think it's important to note that wasting food happens to the best of us as individuals and businesses. We've all had to toss moldy strawberries or clean out that science experiment in the back of our fridge. And the good news is that unlike many of the thorny issues that I'm sure you deal with, this one feels solvable. No one wants to waste food, and people strangely love diving into this topic. I've been amazed at the energy and enthusiasm that people have when they come up to me and tell me that they found a way to use their wrinkled tomatoes in a sauce or something like that. And because there's direct savings to be had, this enthusiasm has extended to the business and the entrepreneurial communities as well. Even modest savings can make a difference. I was asked to give an overview of the problem, but in my last minute, I'd like to suggest at least a few solutions. I'd also like to note that the EPA has prioritized prevention solutions and food donation over things like animal feed and composting. For solutions, first, address consumer waste. From the limited information we do have, households appear to be the largest source of food waste. We recently launched a national media campaign with the Ad Council to address this called Save the Food, with the goal of providing consumers both the inspiration and information to waste less in their homes. If the government were to embrace this campaign and provide additional funding, it could vastly extend the reach and the impact of the campaign. Second, standardize food date labels. As we've already heard, because they misinterpret date labels, consumers are unknowingly and unnecessarily tossing perfectly good food, and other witnesses will address this. Third, reduce waste within federal government agencies. How much is the federal government spending to buy food that ultimately never gets eaten? Addressing this could both reduce agency costs while also incubating model solutions that others could follow. Fourth, address data needs. Right now, there are some very basic questions that we can't answer. And lastly, support the Food Recovery Act introduced by Representative Fingery. It tackles food waste from a variety of angles and includes solutions for many of the issues discussed in my written testimony. Wasting less food is something everyone can get behind, and in some cases, there's even money to be saved. I expect, should you pursue solutions to this problem, you'll find there's a broad base of support behind you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gunders. Mr. Fink, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Conaway, Ranking Member Peterson, and the entire House Agriculture Committee for the opportunity to testify today. I am honored. My name is Jesse Fink, and I am here as a representative of the Refed Multi-Stakeholder Food Waste Initiative. I'd like to dedicate my testimony to my wife, Betsy Fink, a farmer like many members of Congress who have committed their lives to growing food. I also would like to dedicate the testimony to the fifty million Americans who struggle with hunger. In a resource-endowed country like ours, we should be able to conquer hunger, conserve fresh water, and create new jobs through the new food waste innovation. My journey to become a food waste evangelist has been long and shaped by my career as an entrepreneur, a farmer, an investor, and a philanthropist. Twenty years ago, I helped co-found Priceline.com, a business model innovation powered by the Internet, linking perishable airline seats with consumers looking for cheaper tickets. For the past decade, Betsy and I have learned firsthand how challenging and rewarding it is to be a farmer. Similar to Priceline, we see valuable perishable products going to waste. Two years ago, we asked the team at Mission Point Partners to develop a strategy to address the food waste issue systematically, focusing on the most cost-effective and scalable solutions. The huge gap in data needed for solution identification was apparent. What resulted was the creation of Refed, a nonprofit initiative that recently released a roadmap to reduce U.S. food waste by twenty percent, in conjunction with Deloitte Consulting and RRS. Refed built an advisory council of over thirty leading organizations committed to solving food waste. This includes farmers, manufacturers, retailers, waste haulers, foundations, nonprofits, and government leaders, many who are represented here today. Addressing food waste can help solve three of our nation's largest problems. First and foremost is hunger. Our research found that solutions feasible today could nearly double the amount of food donated from businesses to hunger-relief organizations. Second is economic development. Reducing food waste boosts the economy with a conservative estimate of fifteen thousand jobs created from innovation. In addition, solutions available today can create $100 billion of net economic value over the next decade. This includes $6 billion in annual savings for consumers, $2 billion in annual potential for profit for businesses, and a reduced burden on taxpayers, including lower municipal disposable costs. Much of this economic development will go towards food recovery, composting, and anaerobic digestion infrastructure. Lastly is the environment. Common-sense food waste solutions will conserve up to 1.5% of our country's fresh water, and this is lost on farms. In addition, reducing food waste will decrease methane emissions from landfills and increase the health of our soils through composting. Four cross-cutting actions are needed to quickly cut twenty percent of waste and put the U.S. on track to achieve the broader USDA/ EPA goal of a fifty percent food waste reduction by 2030. First, education for consumers and for employees of food businesses. Second, innovation. Refed has an innovation database of over 200 companies. Incubators, accelerators, and large companies are supporting entrepreneurs. There is also an opportunity for government mechanisms to support their ingenuity. Right here in Washington, D.C., companies like Misfit Juicery, Fruit Cycle, and Hungry Harvest are examples of startups that utilize produce that would typically go to waste. Next is financing. The Refed roadmap highlights that we need the full spectrum of capital, including philanthropic grants, government incentives, and private investment to accelerate the transition to a low-waste economy. Financing innovation is required to galvanize the $18 billion needed to achieve a twenty percent reduction in food waste nationwide. There are opportunities to explore public-private partnerships, innovative impact investing to support companies expanding local energy infrastructure or composting facilities, and government funding for research into early-stage technologies. Lastly is policy. Food waste is a complex issue, but three federal policy priorities stand out as a highly impactful and achievable today. First, make it easier for food businesses to donate food for the hungry. Second, standardize date labeling through legislation or voluntary industry action. And finally, strengthen incentives and procurement for food waste solutions at the local level, such as tax incentives for composting and anaerobic digestion. I would like to close by emphasizing that there is a huge momentum and growing awareness around the issue of food waste. The time is now for a country to embrace the solvable problem and, by working together, turn it into an opportunity. We can take steps to alleviate hunger, boost our economy, and preserve our great natural resources. I thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Mr. Oxford, five minutes.
Chairman Conaway, Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to testify at today's hearing on food waste.
I'm John Oxford, President and CEO of L&amp;M Companies, based in Raleigh, North Carolina. Founded in 1964, we are a family agricultural business that grows markets and distributes fresh produce. Our products and our crops include a variety of vegetables, potatoes, onions, melons, apples... apples, pears, and more. In addition to my day job, I'm chairman-elect for the Produce Marketing Association, which is the largest trade association representing companies that market fresh fruits and vegetables. PMA represents more than 2,700 member companies in 45 countries. In the United States, our members throughout the supply chain, from growing, processing, manufacturing, distribution, wholesaling, retail, and food service, handle more than ninety percent of the fresh produce sold to consumers. My testimony today comes from the perspective of a grower. Dealing with food waste is a complex issue that requires a suite of solutions. When fresh produce goes to waste, we lose the fruits or vegetables, as well as the inputs, labor, energy, water, and fertilizer. And if the product has been harvested, cooled, and transported, we lose even more. Thus, the incentive for producers to innovate to minimize waste and loss is significant. Our first preference and our goal is that fresh produce reaches its highest and best use: feeding people. At L&amp;M, we employ a range of options for produce that is unmarketable as fresh to the consumer. We use several outlets for usable product that is not going to be sold through the intended channel. We regularly try to find alternative markets or uses, and in addition, L&amp;M supplies hundreds of thousands of pounds of healthful fresh produce every year to charities, including Farmers Feeding Florida, Feeding America, Operation Blessing, and a host of others. In my role as chairman-elect of PMA, I'm excited about the innovative approaches some of my colleagues are taking to further reduce food waste. In fact, most of you probably have one of the earliest examples of innovation to reduce food waste in your refrigerator at home, and we provided some at your desk this morning. Baby carrots were born from a concern over food waste. Misshapen carrots were cut and shaped into the now-common baby carrots. In fact, today, baby carrots represent seventy percent of all carrot sales, and according to a recent Washington Post article, this effort to reduce waste has actually now doubled carrot consumption. Recently, Cisco's produce distributor, Freshpoint, introduced its usable, unusual but usable program. Though Freshpoint is a food service distributor, it partners with produce growers, taking ugly or imperfect produce that might otherwise go to waste and finds consumers interested in utilizing it. This reduces the waste caused by cosmetic imperfections, and the customers get what they want, often at a more attractive price point. Red Jacket Orchards in New York, like many apple and pear processors, takes the residual solids left after juicing and makes them into pomegranate cakes that can be used to feed livestock. This considerably reduces what goes to the landfill and is an additional supply chain outlet for the grower. We've also supplied some samples of these cakes at your seats today. In another example, Gill's Onions, a California-based producer and processor, installed an advanced energy recovery system that converts 100% of its daily onion residuals, such as juice, into renewable energy and cattle feed. Instead of incurring the disposal cost for its more than 300,000 pounds of annual onion waste, Gill's Onions actually saves approximately $700,000 per year on energy and disposal costs, and has significantly reduced its environmental footprint. A final area I would like to address is the importance of a strong industry and government partnership to address food waste. Encouraging innovation, such as new variety of development through traditional modeling breeding practices, can bring us traits that enhance a crop's ability to withstand stresses due to climate and pests. Likewise, increasing fruits and vegetable shelf life, making them more durable for the transportation process, will reduce waste. We also need the federal government as a partner in the area of research. USDA's intra- and extramural research programs have done great things for our industry and specialty crops in general. And last, but certainly not least, we need help on labor issues. Many growers across the U.S. find difficulty finding farm workers and produce is too often left to rot in the field. I recognize this is a difficult issue to tackle politically, but we need Congress to take action. Significantly reducing our nation's food waste is a challenging endeavor. L&amp;M and the Produce Marketing Association stand ready to partner with you and my fellow witnesses here today to move us closer to a zero-waste system. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for holding this important hearing and this committee's attention to these critical issues.
Thank you, Ms. Oxford. Ms. Staz, did I butcher your name badly?
It's Staz, like Staz.
Staz, yes, ma'am. You're recognized for five minutes.
Chairman Conaway, Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the committee, thank you for giving me the opportunity to participate this morning on this important issue. My name is Megan Staz. I am the Senior Director of Sustainability for the Grocery Manufacturers Association, representing the food, beverage, and consumer products industry. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Food Waste Reduction Alliance, an initiative of thirty leading companies formed in 2011 by GMA, the Food Marketing Institute, and the National Restaurant Association. FWRA commends the committee for holding this hearing and for your interest in finding solutions. I'll make four key points today. First, we know that food waste is a very real problem, and we have a national goal of having it by 2030. Everyone has a role to play to get there. Second, the food industry has already stepped forward and made considerable progress. FWRA brings together manufacturers, retailers, and food service companies around three goals: reduce food waste generated, increase food donated, and recycle unavoidable food waste. GMA's members have been working hard to minimize waste as well. In 2014, our companies recycled nearly ninety-four percent of the food waste from manufacturing, and in 2015, donated over 800 million pounds of food. Third, we know that more needs to be done, and our industry is taking new steps. GMA and FMI are taking the lead on date labeling and reducing consumer confusion. Date labeling is important, and we're addressing it. But context is important, and that's my fourth point. Date labeling is not the solution to food waste. There is no silver bullet solution here. It needs to be tackled in a range of ways. An industry can't solve this problem alone. Consumers, as we know, are responsible for forty-four percent of the food waste in landfills. If we're going to make a serious dent, we need to help consumers. But reducing food waste is a priority. That's why we created FWRA. Co-chaired by ConAgra, Sedexo, and Wegmans, we have four areas of focus: assessment, best practices, communications, and policy. From this work, we've seen really tremendous innovations. ConAgra, who makes Marie Callender's pot pies, found they could change the way they were placing pie dough in a pan and reduce the amount that needed to be trimmed off the edge. This change saved ConAgra over 230 tons of pie dough in a year. That's food waste that never happened. Retailers increased food donation by over a billion pounds in the last decade. Kroger is piloting an onsite digester to turn their food waste into energy. Restaurants are working to reduce waste. Yum! Brands alone donated over 184 million pounds of food since 1992. But let me talk a little bit about date labeling. In January, GMA and FMI's boards resolved to work to address consumer confusion around date labeling, and a working group of 25 companies met here last week. A national standard is crucial to providing consumers with the clarity they need. Forty states have laws regulating date labeling. This patchwork of regulations on some products in some parts of the country is certainly contributing to confusion. But more will need to be done beyond date labeling. Date labels can tackle only about eight percent of the total overall food waste that's going to landfill. This doesn't mean we should do nothing, but clearly more solutions are needed. And businesses are facing challenges to food waste. Supply chain challenges, for example. Food safety is paramount, so if a local food bank has maxed out its refrigeration or refrigerated truck space, often food winds up in a landfill. Similarly, diverting food waste away from landfills requires infrastructure that makes sense. Food waste is heavy, and it's wet, and it requires frequent pickup. If you then have to put that material on a diesel truck and drive it hundreds of miles to the next, to the nearest facility, you've lost your environmental benefit. It also has to make business sense. AD can cost millions to build and operate, and composting facilities can face permitting challenges. So even when a company thinks they've found a solution, the composting facility can be shut down, the AD can go out of business, and the business is back to square one. We're also seeing conflicting regulations at the federal, state, and municipal level. In some states, food waste is banned from landfill, yet permitting is so onerous that there's no infrastructure. Finally, consumers. They're the single-largest contributor of food waste to landfill. NRDC's terrific Save the Food campaign is a great example of what we'll need to see to really move the needle here. So in closing, while challenges do exist, the opportunity is enormous, and we really look forward to working with the committee, our industry partners, and others to reduce food waste all throughout the supply chain. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Staz. Ms. Avi, five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the committee, I'm honored to testify before you today. Each year, we waste 70 billion pounds of food suitable for donation. At the same time, people in every community across our nation struggle with food insecurity. To help end hunger, Feeding America works with 198 food banks, 60,000 local food agencies, and 148 corporate partners. Together, we provide 4.5 billion pounds of food to more than 46 million Americans each year, including 12 million children and 7 million seniors. Of the food we distribute, more than half of it, which is about 2.6 billion pounds, would otherwise go to landfill. And yet, this still does not meet the need. Significant gaps remain between the food low-income people need and the resources that they have to buy it. Diverting excess food to donation provides a triple benefit. It reduces hunger, it protects our environment, and it helps businesses with sustainability. But perishable food must move safely and quickly from the donor to the people who need it. Doing so requires innovative practices, technological know-how, as well as costly physical infrastructure like refrigerator trucks and cold storage capacity. I want to share with you two examples of innovative platforms that we have developed to divert more excess food to donation. Produce Matchmaker is an online portal and ordering system that helps produce donors connect with food banks. It's available 24 hours a day, and it allows food banks to review offers and accept donations in real time, moving produce to hungry families more quickly. Food banks can order produce donations by the pallet rather than the truckload. This saves transportation costs and allows cost-effective rescue of smaller amounts of produce. Produce Matchmaker is already being used by more than 150 food banks and state associations in FY16, and connected 125 million pounds of produce with food banks in across 40 states. It will help us recover and distribute significant amounts of produce that's currently wasted. Meal Connect is our new online platform to facilitate the easy, safe, and fast donation of fresh food from grocery and convenience stores and food service locations. Donors engage online when they have extra product to donate and are matched to the local food bank. It is the only donation-matching software that fully vets both donors and recipients to ensure that proper food safety protocols are followed throughout the process. Using Meal Connect on a smartphone or PC simplifies the logistics of matching excess food with a nearby pantry that can accept it. This is local food rescue in the sharing economy. Meal Connect is enabling Starbucks to partner with Feeding America to launch Food Share, which will provide an additional 50 million meals over the next five years as the program rolls out to 7,600 Starbucks stores across the U.S. But Produce Matchmaker and Meal Connect won't solve the problem alone. Additional investment in technology and physical infrastructure are needed. The improvements to the enhanced tax deduction for donated food enacted last December will also have a significant impact on food recovery. By expanding the deduction to include farmers and growers and making it permanent for, excuse me, for all businesses, we expect that nearly 1 billion additional meals that would have been wasted now will be donated. Thanks to you and your colleagues for passing this critical legislation. Without it, we would be worse off. To continue food, increasing food recovery, additional investments to identify and scale promising program models are definitely required. Policy changes, such as standardizing date labels on food and providing USDA grants to small businesses and nonprofits to facilitate food recovery, would also have a significant impact. As you examine this critical issue and begin preparing for the next farm bill, we stand ready to work with you. I encourage you also to visit your local food bank to learn about food recovery within your district, and thank you very much for the opportunity to testify.
Well, thank our witnesses for testimony. Chair would remind members they'll be recognized. Oh, oh. I'm sorry, Ms. Lee. Chopped liver on the end. I'm sorry, ma'am.
That's okay.
Ms. Lee for five minutes. Sorry about that.
Did my time pass so fast?
You looked like a stat. Yeah, I did. My apologies. I'm so sorry. Ms. Lee, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Conaway, and Ranking Member Peterson, and the members of the committee for the opportunity to speak with you. My name's Emily Broadleeb, and I direct the Harvard Law School Food Law and Policy Clinic. We've worked on reducing food waste for several years, and through our work with various clients and partners, we've come to see intimately the challenges to food waste reduction and food recovery, and I want to highlight a few issues. First, as you've heard from many of my colleagues, confusion over date labels is a major cause of food waste. The Refed report found that standardizing date labels is the most cost-effective of 27 of the different solutions they examined to reduce food waste and could divert 398,000 tons of food waste. We've identified two key challenges with date labels. First, in the Dating Game, which we published in 2013 with the NRDC, we showed that there's a dizzying array of state laws created to fill the void in federal regulation on this issue. Forty-one states and DC regulate date labels, but no two states have the same law, which is evidence that these laws are not based in science or sound public policy. New York, for example, does not regulate dates on any food products, but its neighbor, Massachusetts, requires dates on all perishable and semi-perishable products, and then heavily restricts sale or donation after the date. Second, we found that consumers are confused. On most foods, date labels are not intended to communicate safety. Instead, they signal a manufacturer's estimate of how long the food will be at its best taste, but consumers toss past date food because of safety fears. In a national survey my clinic conducted this April with the National Consumers League and the Johns Hopkins Center for a Livable Future, we found that over a third of consumers always throw food away after the date, and eighty-four percent do so at least occasionally. Interestingly, a third of consumers also already believe the federal government regulates date labels. Through our work on date labels, we've also learned that safety is a risk for certain food products, such as deli meats or unpasteurized dairy, if they're consumed after the date. That also isn't communicated clearly to consumers. Moving forward, we could align with what most other countries do, and as Representative Pingree discussed, require a standard quality label on foods where freshness is a concern, and a standard safety label on foods that actually carry a safety risk after the date. We've been excited to see support for standard date labels from companies like Walmart, General Mills, Nestle, and Campbell's. Standardizing these labels could help consumers make better decisions, they could facilitate donation of safe, past-date food, and could also be a win for companies. Moving on, I'd like to talk about food donation. Several of my colleagues and the chairman mentioned the fear of exposure to liability, which hampers food donation, but strong liability protections already exist. In 1996, Congress passed the Bill Emerson Good Samaritan Act, which provides a very strong federal floor of civil and criminal liability protection to both food donors and the nonprofit organizations that distribute food to needy individuals. These organizations are protected as long as they don't act with intentional misconduct or gross negligence. But 67% of manufacturers and 54% of retailers still say that the main reason they don't donate is because of fear of liability. Food recovery organizations report that many donors don't know about this legislation, or that if they do know, they're concerned about the lack of authoritative interpretation of some of the key terms. The Act has not been challenged in court, so there are no judicial interpretations of it, and it was never assigned to any agency, so there are no agencies that provide federal guidance or fill in these gaps or provide education about the Act. Congress could call on an agency to provide guidance and raise awareness about the Act to help address these challenges. Closely related to liability is the issue of food safety regulations. In our federalist system, regulations of grocery stores and restaurants takes place at the state level. State health codes vary, but they're mostly based on the FDA Food Code. However, the Food Code does not incorporate language around food donation, so states lack federal guidance around safe food donation. Including food donations in the Food Code or other federal guidance could help states clarify their safety laws and better prioritize food donation. Lastly, I want to mention the opportunity for innovation. Organizations have begun to test different entrepreneurial approaches to food recovery. Several of our client organizations are testing technologies that connect donors and food recovery organizations, that convert non-conforming fruits and vegetables into new products, or apply retail models to provide surplus food at a low cost. As often happens, these innovations could not be predicted when the laws were first passed, so several existing laws, like the Emerson Act, actually pose barriers to the viability of some of these innovations. This committee could address barriers like this and create a friendlier climate for innovation. In conclusion, despite strong laws, barriers persist. Addressing the challenges I mentioned, such as standardizing date labels, strengthening liability protections, and food safety guidance, and supporting innovation, can reduce the amount of food waste and increase the amount of healthy, safe food recovered. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and good recovery from my rudeness. Chair, remind members that they'll be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who are here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in order of arrival. I appreciate everyone's understanding. I recognize myself for five minutes. Sitting here, listening to you, I suddenly realized that I was among some early adopters of this issue. of this issue of not wasting food, in the sense that as a young MP at Fort Hood, we would race across Fort Hood with sirens blaring and red lights flashing to get to the McDonald's at two o'clock in the morning to get all the unsold Big Macs that we would then take back to headquarters and pass them around to our colleagues. So, early on, I was an early adopter, in addition to growing up in a family where nothing was wasted. Ms. Vee, will you talk to us a little bit about the struggles or differences between, or challenges, differences between rural food banks and urban food banks, the sense of produce, how they get it, access to it? We've heard some of the retailers here a week or so ago talking about particularly small retailers in rural America have a hard time getting produce. Could you talk to us about how food banks in urban and rural are approaching those challenges differently?
And the challenges facing rural food banks are different than those in urban food banks. Just transportation alone is probably one of the biggest challenges. Recently, I had the opportunity, since I'm relatively new to Feeding America, to go around the country and have listening sessions, and in the sessions that brought together most of the rural food banks, the number one challenge that they saw that they faced was transportation. In fact, they asked for us to find donations for replacement of their tires because they had to get to such far distances. But it's not only on the side of the distribution of the food, it's also with regard to the people who are facing hunger. Their ability to be able to get together and come to a central location to receive the food is also a challenge. I don't think it's a challenge that we've solved. Also, because most of the people facing hunger, or more of them, are in cities and in concentrated areas, there may be an inclination to want to go to where most of the people are, but yet the needs in the rural communities are just as great, so that we have a balance issue when there are limited resources.
We did have one retailer talk about the idea of setting up centralized points within the rural communities where they could take the donated produce there. Ms. Stas, you said, I think, that we had some forty different state rules or regulations with respect to labeling. Would you and your team be supportive of a federal preemption of all of those various state rules and regulations?
Yes, I think, you know, a national standard is really crucial. I think Emily did a really good job of pointing out the complexity that's existing now, and I think that as we think about if there is going to be regulation, then federal preemption would be really critical to streamlining that process and reducing consumer confusion. And we thank Mrs. Pingree for all of her work on this really important issue and really starting the conversation.
Well, thank you. I do believe the statute of limitations is run on anything I might have just confessed to with respect to my conduct at Fort Hood, so with that, I'll yield back and recognize the ranking member for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do all of you agree that to get at our goal here, we need a federal preemption of state laws? Do any of you disagree with that? Silence.
It's gonna be hard, it's gonna be hard for the stenographers to write that down.
I'm happy to agree with that. I think, you know, as we've discussed, you know, when we started looking at state laws on date labels, we saw, you know, we looked at a handful in New England, and they were all different, and the more we zoomed out and looked across the country, they really, it's very clear that they're not based on some sort of standard safety information, so I think it makes sense to have one standard that everyone can follow.
Yeah, so you'd have to have a federal preemption in order to accomplish that.
Yeah, I think so.
And I'm, you know, I'm a little bit concerned about how this would work because we got so many people involved in trying to use the labeling and marketing of food, and they got the consumers to the point where they don't know what the heck is going on, you know? And it just concerns me, you know, like this GMO issue, you know, they're opposing preemption of that because some people think that it's a good thing for the states to have these different laws, you know, which goes completely opposite of what we're talking about here. And then you've got these folks out there doing these dietary guidelines and trying to push all of that stuff, and we've got a bill that's been introduced that puts the food police in charge of the ag committee, I guess, you know, that are pushing all kinds of ideology, you know, there, whatever it might be, confusing the heck out of people. You've got people labeling things natural and using it to create stores and so forth, and so I'm just concerned that if we pass this bill that says you're gonna have two dates, one is Best Buy and the other is expires. You know, I agree that we need to get, this is a good thing to do, and this is, you know, if we could accomplish it would be probably the best solution, or, you know, one of the main things that could change things. But in the bill, it says expires on is the date for the, not the quality, but the, I guess, the safety date. I think that's, I don't think consumers would understand what that means. You know, I think you almost have to say, "Do not consume after this date," to get them to understand. You know, I'm just, you know, we're putting so much stuff on this label that, you know, all of these labels, that I'm not sure it's gonna break through, you know? So I don't know what you all think about that. Do you think, am I off-base, concerned about all this?
So I sort of have two answers, and then I'll leave time if others want to jump in. One, in terms of this question about the information being out there, if you go to any store right now, even in the states that don't regulate date labels like New York, almost every product, particularly in the center of the store, has a date label on it. Everything from bottled water to vinegar to canned goods, whatever. So I think what's great about this, it's not taking information away. Consumers are used to seeing those and they want to see them, it's just trying to make it clear so that they don't see a million different ones. I think you're right that no matter what those labels are, education's gonna be needed. The problem right now is that because there are so many different labels, it's impossible to educate anyone about what they mean. I've tried. I would love to be able to say, "Here's what you should glean from these." And then lastly, the term expires on actually was, in the national survey that we did last month that I mentioned, we checked six different label language, and expires on, fifty-four percent of people believe that was a safety label, that was higher than any other one, and there were also the lowest percentage of people that thought it was a quality indicator. So again, fifty-four percent isn't a lot, but it's a start, and I think with education, it could be built upon that.
Yeah, well, I, go ahead.
Just if I may, really quickly, I do think you really hit the nail on the head in that we want to get this right the first time, right? We don't want to further contribute to consumer confusion, so we want to make sure that we are testing consumers to make sure they understand what we're trying to convey, coordinate with other labeling changes that are coming down the line, like the Nutrition's Facts Panel, and really have industry flexibility to truncate the phrase, make sure it fits on small packaging, in order to make sure that we're harmonizing our standards and our language and conveying the right information to the consumer.
Well, I would say amen to that, and if you've read this bill, I am concerned about, I agree with the goal, but I'm concerned about the way this thing is structured, that you're gonna get these different agencies involved in this, and by the time you're done, you're not gonna recognize what you tried to accomplish. And, you know, I've seen that with the Farm Bill. When I passed the Farm Bill, by the time I got done with regulations, I didn't recognize what we had passed. So I think we have to be careful about how we do this. I agree that what we're trying to accomplish, but if you get too many agencies involved and allow too much, whatever, you're gonna end up potentially with a worse situation.
Yield back. Jim yields back. Mr. Kelly, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Ranking Member, and I thank you, members of the panel. First of all, I just want to say, you know, we have a lot of food pantries. I'm from Mississippi, and we have a lot of rural areas, and our food pantries do such a great job, and so any kind of reduction. Second, I very rarely do this, and she'll probably kill me, but my wife volunteers for Meals on Wheels all the time to take these meals to the elderly or people who can't travel and those things, and she's such, you know, she never gets recognized. We've been married for twenty-five years, and it seems like she's always behind the scene, but my wife Sheila just does a great job, and we need more of that because there's a lot of people who really want to help people and get this food in the right hands. As a child growing up, my mother used to go to the stale bread store in town and would buy up the donuts and things that we necessarily couldn't afford, or bread or other buns and those kind of things, and then she would freeze them, and we would eat them all year. And as kids, we didn't know any different. It was still good food. The things that most people threw away, we got to eat. So I thank y'all for doing this. And Ms. Stas, and I think I got that right, to what extent is the industry engaged in coordinating efforts to promote uniform labeling?
We're very engaged. This is a GMA and FMI board-level initiative right now. We have twenty-five companies who are working on this to make sure that we really get this right the first time, to make sure the information that we're conveying to consumers is accurate and it's the right kind of information. But this is a really important issue for us, and it's something that we're taking very seriously.
And just, you know, as a follow-up on that, when we create things here, we don't always get the right results because we don't have the baseline of knowledge that is necessary. We're not the professionals in every area, and we have such a broad range of things. So when you guys create the right things for yourself, it prevents us from doing the wrong thing, with good hearts and good minds and trying to do the right thing, but we sure appreciate your input. And how do your manufacturers in your organization now work with different date labeling laws in each state, and what limitations does it put on you because of these laws?
It's certainly onerous. I mean, our member companies are obviously complying with state law, but it does tend to create a lot of unintended consequences. I think Ms. Aviv really highlighted some of the confusion around at the food bank level, and there's different foods that wind up getting thrown away unnecessarily. There is certainly a call for and a reason for a national standard that the industry is working towards to reduce consumer confusion and prevent some of these unintended consequences of these laws.
And Ms. Aviv, to what extent have potential food donors raised liability concerns to you about a reason to withhold donations?
Thank you. Congressman, I think that the issue that we see is lack of knowledge, where people new to this space who want to help and want to contribute argue that they can't because they won't be protected, and that it's almost a one-by-one-by-one education unless we can create a systematic way to engage in this kind of work. I was most recently at a conference organized by Ohio State University with all of its alumni and so on, and the alumni sitting there talking about food insecurity, people sitting at the front table said that they were reluctant to get involved in this because they thought there were liabilities. These are people who are leaning into this area, so I don't think we should underestimate the degree to which there are people not engaging because they think they're not protected.
And final question from Mr. Oxford. So-called ugly fruit and vegetables in many cases have less value in the so-called marketplace. What other opportunities, you talked about some, but if you can just talk about what opportunities the industry is exploring to add value to these products?
Well, you mentioned the ugly fruit, and that's been a growing movement across the industry, one that we participated in, and a lot of retailers are helping to do that, and I mentioned the food service side is getting involved with it as well. And one of the things you have to keep in mind on that is, you know, how things are positioned in the stores or at the food service level, and we believe there's great opportunity, and it's a huge waste. From our standpoint as a grower, we hope every fruit, stem, and leaf ends up on someone's plate, so just trying to do anything that we can to make those products available is what we're trying to do.
And just a final anecdote, my dad, growing up, he would not eat white corn. He didn't like it, and so my mother put food coloring in it, and he said, "This is the best corn I've ever had." So sometimes our price-pointing and other things make it better, and I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Yogi yields back. Mr. David Scott for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, this is a real, very serious problem here, and appreciate you, Chairman, pulling this together. But there seems to be two fundamental areas here that we need to address. The first one is, how do you change human behavior? That is the big issue here. The second big one is, how do we address this issue of where the food waste starts on the farm? And I represent Georgia, and we are the leaders in the nation, perhaps the world, of growing blueberries. The problem is that so much of those blueberries are left wasted, rotting in the fields because we have failed to address the number-one issue that we here in Congress can do to address food shortage, and that's to make sure our agriculture and our farmers, those who are producing crops like blueberries, have the adequate supply of labor to be able to harvest them. So we've got to do something about that first. Second point is on that, is that how do we coordinate a better relationship with that, if it's an oversupply, our farmers would gladly, at a much reduced cost, rather than see those crops rot in the field, get them to our food banks, like the Atlanta Food Bank, which is one of the more premier food banks with over seventy-five million pounds of food put out each year. That takes good management resource allocation. Now, the other one is on the, how do you get to the real? Because about eighty percent of the problem, if we solve it at the first end of helping stop the food shortage of food rotting in the farmers because they can't get the labor, because we fail to address immigration from an economic agriculture, supply, labor standpoint, when we get to the changing of the human behavior, we've got to get into a coordinated partnership with the media, with television, with radio, to be able to change human behavior, educate the public. Now, we did this with smoking, so it can be done. We changed that human behavior. Many people say, "You're not gonna be able to get people lunch," but there was a coordinated effort with the leaders in the media industry to help with the kinds of public announcements, commercials that we could. So I'd like to get y'all's response to that. First, let's address, am I right on this labor issue, Mr. Oxford?
Without a doubt. That's one of the biggest challenges for us as growers, is not having adequate labor to harvest the crops at times, and when we leave crops in the field, sure, we can ditch them in and use those as nutrients for the soil, but that really means the crop is not going to its highest and best use, which is feeding people.
And how about your ability? Am I right in assuming that you would be able to work with food banks in a much better resource allocation way to be able to get that food so it gets on to the needy people rather than rotting in the fields?
Absolutely, and we already do, as I mentioned in my testimony, supply hundreds of thousands of pounds to food banks annually ourselves, probably that doesn't meet specifications for the customers that we have and so forth, but I think distribution is a big part of the equation that has to be figured out, and it's, there's no silver bullets here. It has to be a collaborative effort from all parts of the supply chain.
Right. And now, the reason I mentioned the human behavior is I looked at this, clearly forty-five percent of food is wasted at the dinner table. And, Mr. Chairman, I think it might be helpful if we begin to address a way in which we can coordinate some resources at the federal level to help get public service announcements, to get and work with many of our partners in the media and engage them, much as the same way we did in changing the human behavior of smoking. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Jim yields back. Chris Gibson, five minutes.
Thanks, Mrs. Chairman. I appreciate this hearing, and I just want to come in behind Mr. Scott and concur with his statements, and I appreciate the chairman. I know he's been looking at this, too. We have a number of members on the committee who have been concerned about ag labor, serious issues there. I've introduced a bill on this. I certainly don't claim that it corners the market in any ideas here. In fact, I think perhaps at this time, maybe what we should do as a committee is just to have a hearing and look into it more, and I know the committee is looking at that, and I appreciate that. The second is, and I apologize, I was a few minutes late, but I did learn from the testimony that I did hear from Ms. Lee. I was interested to hear your comment, really, your analysis of the Emerson Act, which is, from what I hear of you, very helpful in its from what I hear of you, very helpful in its intent, but perhaps needing some refinement, some amendments. And I thought you were very clear in what could be done. And, you know, I certainly would be supportive of an effort on that score. I just want to make that comment. And then, and then third, and this is really the question, I'm curious for the panel, in your experiences, have you seen any best practices as far as information is concerned? A not-for-profit that maybe is a clearinghouse in a community where, you know, all restaurants and farmers can provide information about what they have. So there's sort of, in a community, there's a place where people can go and say, "Well, here's our inventory of all that's the perishables and perhaps the non-perishables about what's available." Has anybody seen anything like that?
Yes. There are, in addition to what Feeding America is doing with their new platform, there are a few other local startups that are doing it. There is a small company based in Boston that's doing it for New England right now that is creating a platform that has knowledge of tractor-trailers that are being rejected at particular places and are not going to find their intent, and then matching those with locations that could use that. So it, large organizations like Feeding America, and there's a lot of innovation that's happening at a local level as well.
I would say that there are lots of efforts by Feeding America to try and get to the very issue that you've raised. Obviously, part of the challenge that we face is to make sure that the food, this whole food labeling issue is not an unimportant issue because we want to be sure that the food is, that gets picked up, is then put in, if it's perishable, is put in a refrigerator truck, is transported to a safe place, is housed in a safe place before it's distributed. So that even as we are very encouraged by efforts of small groups to do the same thing, we want to be sure that we have a safe, protected standard. Because if we have stories that come out of somebody getting food poisoning or something as a result of this, that might be perceived by the public as the tip of the iceberg when in fact it was an isolated incident. So we have to proceed here quite carefully. Our effort with Starbucks that we are now going to do over the next five years with hundreds and hundreds of stores will give us an opportunity to test this effort because it's a small amount of food from each store. But they are incentivizing us through providing us with enough financial support to be able to purchase refrigerator trucks so that the food banks can go buy and pick that food up every single day. Multiply that by every store in the cities, in the variety of cities that have food left over. We have to make sure that the infrastructure of, or the people who pick it up are picking it up and carrying it safely to the place where it then can be distributed to people who need food. So it's a logistics and transportation and safety issue. It's not a lack of will issue.
Just to add to that, there's quite a bit of innovation on that front. There's an organization, a startup in Chicago, that's been training Uber and Lyft drivers in safe food handling practices and then allowing restaurants to broadcast via text to a number of food pantries until someone accepts it. And then they bring it over very quickly so that it can, you know, get to people quickly. And I would say that there's a long tail to the food waste thing. There's big organizations and sometimes they have large quantities, but there's also a lot of small restaurants and such that have small quantities, but it's still worthwhile to donate. And I think, as Mr. Fink mentioned, really encouraging the innovation there can serve that sort of long tail.
I thank the panelists and my time has expired. Thanks, Chairman.
Chairman's time has expired. Mr. Wallace, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, all of you. Critically important topic. A thank you to my colleague, Ms. Pingree, who I've had the honor and pleasure of sharing a meal at her home over this. She takes this to heart and takes food as an important part of our cultural life, which kind of brings me back to what Mr. Scott and Mr. Kelly, and you're hearing it up here, saying this issue of, I'm by training a cultural geographer, this is an attitude issue as much as it is logistics. I think these are important from labeling and all that. You're really getting at it. But it's interesting when you hear people up here talk, those of us of a certain generation, there's a pride in the thriftiness around food. I come from a family, until I was 12 years old, I thought head cheese was really cheese that my mom was making. And when we found out, we still ate it, but it was the idea of that sense of waste that was probably passed on from a previous generation where food insecurity was a real threat to them. And you see this around the world. And so I do think getting at that, because there's some really interesting phenomena here. We take great pride out in southern Minnesota that we feed and clothe and fuel the world and we're, have the most efficient producers of food the world has ever seen. And so because of that, and then working in conjunction with all of you and Ms. Saz, your organization, you have become so incredibly efficient at delivering foods from all over the world to our local grocery store and to our homes that it has changed that cultural perception. Not that we've gotten lazy or whatever. We don't have to be as thoughtful about it. And I was amazed this week of looking at it when I go to shop for bananas. It's a fine art because I don't want them green because I want to eat them that night, but when I buy them yellow, they're bad the next day, almost. And it's really that supply chain along there that we're trying to get at. So I'm curious, I think Mr. Scott was talking about putting things out in the public, public awareness and all that, but I think, Ms. Gunderson, you did this right. And if anything I've learned from this job and as a school teacher too, Maslow's hierarchy, appeal to the bottom of the hierarchy first, how it impacts their safety, their pocketbook and things like that. And then they'll eventually self-actualize, this is the right thing to do, it saves the planet, it saves those types of things. Are we getting at the heart of the things that can make a difference at the bottom of that for people? Is the food labeling one of those? And then maybe throw it out to each of you for some of your points on this. Mr. Fink, you talked about the data, which I think is incredible what you've been able to do to gather data on this, but I think it's very hard. And then maybe the last one to you, Ms. Aviv, how does USA Food Inspectors interact with food banks and some of these on the large scales? Because I've got some fantastic ones in Minnesota that do some really incredible field-to-plate type of things. So I know that's very broad in general, but the rest of the country is maybe catching up where all of you are at. And there's win-win-wins in this if we get this right. This is one of those issues that are incredibly positive economically, health-wise, reducing government spending on things that all of us want to see done. So I'll leave my last two minutes for maybe give some points on that. I know it's very generalized, but we got to get at this.
Yeah. So as I mentioned, NRDC has partnered with the Ad Council on a campaign to try to shift the cultural paradigm around food waste. You know, it's absolutely correct that if I walk down the sidewalk right now and I throw half a sandwich on the sidewalk, people will think I'm crazy because I'm littering. But if I throw it in the garbage can, people won't quite think much of it. And that's really the paradigm that we are trying to shift. There was over 12 months of research that went into the campaign and found things like, people don't know they're wasting food. Nobody, you know, if you ask somebody if it's okay, nobody will say yes, but nobody realizes they themselves are doing it and it's kind of flying under the radar. And the other thing is that it's a byproduct of sort of people's good intentions. You want to host a good dinner party, you want to feed your kids healthy, fresh food, and there's this byproduct of waste. So the campaign is trying to create kind of a wake-up call that, yes, this is happening. And then also create a positive message that this is something people can get on board to do better and trying to shift that culture. And so I think we're trying to get at some of the motivations behind it through really positive messaging and empowering people to make changes in their kitchens because a lot of it is happening right there.
I think your question had to do a little bit about the data and what do we do with it. The intent of Reef Ed was actually to comb the data that was out there and to create this advisory council of the 30 experts from all the different industries and nonprofits to understand the data and to create a roadmap, which is essentially an action plan of what are all the areas where food is being wasted and what are the solutions and how can investment be made, in one case, to accomplish that. And that's where we came up with the 27 solutions. And there are investment opportunities for private investors, for philanthropic organizations like foundations that can make grants to Feeding America and other nonprofits, and for corporations to make investments in their own infrastructure. So the first step was collecting the data and creating the roadmap. Now it's an opportunity for individual organizations to figure out how they can invest in the solutions.
Well, thank you. Maybe if we get a second round, I'll wait till my time is up to come back around. I want to explore that, the next part, the economic potential that comes from this and how you're already doing that.
Chairman's time has expired. Mr. Molinier, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I also want to thank you all for being here. Just this number, 40%, is pretty staggering. And I wonder if, I think most people wouldn't be aware of that. And if there was one takeaway that you wanted me to be able to communicate back in my district from each of, you know, as you've been thinking about this today and throughout your, you know, work, what would that one takeaway be that you'd want me to be able to communicate? Because I think that number is pretty staggering. And then when you look at the supply chain aspect of it, it becomes a much more complicated issue in terms of how to resolve. But is there one thing that you would want me to be able to communicate in my district? And maybe just go right down the panel.
I think it's that this is very addressable and it just takes easy steps to do it. It can be overwhelming when you think too much about it, but ultimately, if everyone cares about this and we all think food shouldn't be wasted, it won't be as much.
I would say that most people are not aware of how much food they waste personally and that this problem can be solved starting so much by the consumer and then the consumer can push that to restaurants and to retailers.
What I would say is that I think there's a misperception with a lot of consumers that if the fruit or the vegetable doesn't look just absolutely perfect in the store when they're picking it out, then it's, it can't be good. And that's simply not true. And so support for and encouragement of some of the imperfect or the unusual-looking fruits and vegetables, that those are still very healthful products for consumers would be terrific.
And I'd say the number one takeaway is the importance of measurement, whether you're a business, whether you're a household, a city, a state, understanding, getting some numbers behind how much food waste you're wasting, you immediately find opportunities to improve. I, for one, need to stop buying grapefruits, right? I just don't eat them. But, you know, and I can understand how much money I save as soon as I track that every week. And I think that measurement is far and away the best practice.
I think there are no silver bullets here and because we can't solve all of it doesn't mean that we shouldn't try and solve some of it. And one step at a time will get us all the way there. One of the great successes of, in regard to this area, that we think is helpful was the passage of the tax legislation that made the donation of food by small businesses possible, incentivizing them to give. So instead of that food going to waste, now because of this charitable tax deduction, they can donate that. If we can educate our farmers and our small business people in the communities about this opportunity, we can save a heck of a lot and that will be the first step of many that we can take.
And I'd say sort of two. One, on date labels, that for the most part, foods are really indicating quality to you and that hopefully you can say you're working on trying to make them clear. And I think the other, on the liability, I mentioned the Emerson Act is incredible. I mean, it's an enormous amount of protection and the biggest challenge is that businesses don't know about that. And having representatives from Congress say to them, "We have this legislation, you're really protected, this is a priority for us," could go, you know, miles in getting more people to feel comfortable donating food.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You back? Mr. Chairman. Chairman just back. Ms. Fudge, five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all so much for being here. Mr. Chairman, let me just take a point of personal privilege. Today is Congressional Foster Youth Shadow Day. And today I have a foster student with me. Her name is Regine Jordan Wells, who was in the system for five years and is an Alice student at Cleveland State University. So let's welcome her.
Will she stand up and wave at us?
Regine?
Up, there she is. Welcome. Glad you're with us.
Thank you. And now to my questions. First, let me again thank you all. This has been most enlightening and very timely, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this hearing. Certainly, I do represent the city of Cleveland and Akron and 20 cities in between. I represent one of the poorest districts in America, so this is extremely important to me as I work closely with my food banks on a fairly regular basis and have my staff go on a regular basis to assist and volunteer. So it is good, Ms. Aviv, to have you here as I wanted to just remind you that earlier this year, Mr. Rodney Davis, my colleague from Illinois, and I did in fact request that the Appropriations Committee provide an additional $100 million for the cost of storing, transporting and distributing food. We know that refrigerated storage, we know that moving food is very, very important to making this whole thing work because a lot of times if it's difficult for them to donate the food, they won't do it. And so I just want you to be aware that we did it and thank you for your assistance, Feeding America's assistance in helping us do that. And I'm happy that my colleagues have heard today how important it is to make sure that we have the transportation and the refrigeration that we need. Ms. Lee, we've been talking about the Emerson Act for some time this morning, but unlike other statutes, there is no, there has never been a federal agency that really is over this particular act. Would it help if in fact there was some kind of guidance by a federal agency? Would that make persons who come under this act feel better?
I think so. I mean, I think, you know, one issue is really that there's a lack of awareness, which can also be addressed by having an agency that's really tasked with putting guidance out, telling people about it, sharing information. And then the other question, there's, I mean, it's intended to be incredibly strong. If you read it, you can get that. But I think as attorneys, as an attorney myself, I can imagine if I were advocating on behalf of a company, looking at it and saying, "There are a few terms in here that are unclear. Apparently wholesome food. What does wholesome really mean? Is something that's past date wholesome or not?" There are other questions like that as well. The Act says, for example, that food has to follow federal, state and local quality and labeling standards, but some of the labeling standards are not related to safety. So even having an agency be able to say, you know, the allergens certainly are safety-related. That is important to be on food when it's donated, but if the net weight is wrong, someone who's going to get this food that, you know, is being donated, if it says it's three ounces and it's really four ounces or vice versa, that's not an issue. So I think there's a bunch of places like that where having an agency be able to provide clarity and raise awareness would go a really long way.
I mean, I've heard on two occasions today that there is some role for the federal government, and I'm happy to hear that. I'm happy to understand that my colleagues would agree that we don't want to have 40 or 50 different states with all different rules. And secondly, that with the Emerson Act, there should be some at least interpretive guidance as to how it goes. So I thank you for that and hopefully we can take care of some of those things. You talked about labor. I mean, you kind of talk around it. Are you talking about immigration? What are you talking about?
Well, certainly immigration is a part of the discourse. And I know that's a tough issue to tackle politically, but yes, that's a big, a big part of it. It affects our ability to get the products grown and harvested into the marketplace and simplistically, we can probably either import labor or import our fruits and vegetables. And that's a tough pill to swallow sometimes, but yes, that's a big part of it.
Thank you very much. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies, you yield back. Mr. Yoho, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate y'all being here. And today, as you brought out, Ms. Fudge, the Foster Youth Shadow Program, we have one with us from the great state of Florida, Ms. Samantha Rogers. If you'd raise your hand.
Hey, Samantha.
She's a young lady doing great things and congratulations for being here and sharing with us. Ms. Lee, I wanted to hit on the Emerson Act and you've talked extensively about it. And, you know, to make it further to incentivize the tax things and the clarification in laws, if, in your, the work that you've done with that, if there's any recommendations that you can give us on this committee that we could help draft that, that would surely facilitate that. Because I think the incentives and the things that Mrs. Aviv brought up, the tax incentives for people to be able to go ahead and donate those things, because we see it so often. And I grew up like Mr. Wallace. I was from Minnesota. I've got five brothers, four of them were older. And when we sat down, all six of us, it was like puppies at the dish, you know? And if you're the last one there, you didn't get anything. So there wasn't any... there wasn't any food waste when we were growing up. And then, growing up, you know, I was on food stamps for a period of time, and we were good miser's with that. And then my mom, you know, she taught us how to, you know, you saved all your food, and at the end of the week, you had stew. And it was always really good. So saying that, being in the agricultural sector since I was about fifteen years of age, we've seen a lot of waste. I've worked at produce markets. I've worked at loading docks, and then working with the farmers. We've seen, you know, the crops left in the fields. And so, any recommendations you can give as far as things that we can do up here, as far as legislation, would be great along those lines. And then I've had a, a specific question here for Mr. Fink. You mentioned consumer education as a cross-cutting action to reducing waste. Have you found any specific best practices in educating the consumers? And what have you found as the most effective ways to educate the consumer, not just the consumer? I wanted to add to that, awareness in industry. And I know industry does a good job, from the grocery stores to restaurants, to the farmers, and to the families. And is, have you, any cooperation with USDA on public service announcements? Yes, sir.
Thank you. So the first question on the consumer side, I think that we're getting a great start with the Ad Council and NRDC, and a few congressmen mentioned ad campaigns over the years that have changed behavior, and I believe that this will do that. It's a start. It needs to be backed up by companies providing awareness at supermarkets and at restaurants. There are chefs who are circling the hill today who are interested in food waste, and chefs actually could play a role in changing people's behavior. So I think it starts with the Ad Council, but then companies can play a role, and the government can play a role. I, I would also say, on the industry side, and we have personal experience, we have a farm, and we collect produce, leftover produce from the local market. Every day, we go and there's a new person, and they, they're not doing it the same way. So employee training is huge. And that's why it was one of the things that came out of the REEFED, was not just the consumer training, but employee training.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Staz, you brought up, you know, like the grapefruit. You, you buy stuff. I've done that myself. We buy things that sometimes we shouldn't. And I mean, that's just up to us, and, you know, it's a cost-benefit analysis there that we have to make. But, and Mr. Oxford, I think you brought this up too. The bruised tomato, nobody wants to buy that. But if you're in the restaurant business, you know, that's different. You can utilize that, and it's kind of like buying a new car, you know? I don't want the one with the dent in it. And so, again, I think if, if the retail market or the restaurants move to, like, on Wednesdays, it's Brunswick stew, because that's the leftovers, and those aren't the things that are the, the shiniest. Have you guys seen a difference in the handling of food waste in the rural versus the urban areas? In the grocery stores, restaurants?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say there, there are some market differences, but I think overall, the general through line there is a real struggle with infrastructure. So depending upon what kind of business you're operating and where you are, urban or rural, your infrastructure options are going to be really different, right? So if you're a, a restaurant, and you have small amounts of pickup, you're going to have to get someone to come pick up that material really, really frequently if you're in a city. And then it has to go a really long way away to go to a composting facility or an anaerobic digestion facility, and you could lose your environmental benefit by putting it on that diesel truck. So I think for all businesses, increasing infrastructure options to make sure we're meeting the, the fifty percent reduction goal is going to be really critical.
Okay. Thank you. I yield back.
Chairman, your time has expired. Mr. McGovern, five minutes.
Well, thank you. Thank you all for being here. And this has been excellent testimony, and, and it's all common sense, and it's all doable. It doesn't seem like it's rocket science to be able to implement a, a sensible food waste policy in this country. If I have a suggestion, we should just put you all in a room, and you write the policy and tell us to fund it, and then we're done. Because I think you represent the vast array of the players that need to be, need to be at the table. You know, a few weeks ago, I was invited to, by the Amherst Cinema in Amherst, Massachusetts, to react to a film they were showing called Just Eat It. It was about a couple that decided to live for six months on food waste. At the beginning of the film, they thought they couldn't do it. They, they wouldn't be able to find good, you know, food waste to be able to live on. By the end of the film, they, you know, they gained twenty pounds, because it was so plentiful. And they were able to eat relatively healthy, but they ended up eating a lot because they uncovered so much discarded food. They went to dumpsters and supermarkets and uncovered, you know, huge amounts of, of discarded food. They went into the supermarkets to try to buy food, like bananas that were, that were, that were being taken off the shelf, and they were told by the people at the supermarket, they couldn't sell it to them. And so, when they discarded them, they went into the dumpster and, and got them. And they had so much food left over, they had a banquet at the end of, for all their friends. The bottom line is, this is, we waste an enormous amount of good, nutritious, healthy food that not only can feed hungry people, but quite frankly, could be utilized in our schools and in so many other places. And we need to fix this problem. And there's an environmental aspect to this, too. Moving away from landfills, going into digesters and composting and, you know, feeding animals versus, you know, kind of the way we were doing it with, with landfills. But, you know, I come at this issue primarily from kind of the hunger aspect. I mean, we've got close to fifty million people in this country who are hungry. We should all be ashamed of that. And while what we're talking about here today is not a substitute for SNAP or WIC or other food nutrition programs, clearly, getting good nutritious food to people who are struggling is really important. And so, then we get to the infrastructure issues. It's, you know, I, on that panel I was on, was, was a farmer who, out of the kind of the goodness of his heart, brings his excess produce to the food bank of Western Massachusetts. But he didn't get any incentives. I mean, he doesn't, he doesn't, there's no, it's hard, and he's a small farm. I think a lot of people are, you know, are faced with this. They don't have the labor force, or they don't have the refrigerated trucks to do the transporting of the food. And then, even at food banks, there's a limited amount of refrigeration. And then, and then you could talk about trying to get it to smaller stores or whatever. They have a limited amount of refrigeration. You know, in TFAP, we, we authorize a hundred million dollars for transportation and storage. We never funded it that. It's like half of that. So at some point, we've got to figure out a way to, to fund this. And, and Ms. Aviv and Mr. Fink, maybe you, we could talk a little bit about, you know, the, the, the infrastructure challenges, especially when it comes to feeding the hungry in this country. You know, and how do, how do we, how do we, how do we piece together the funding? How much does it cost? How do, how do we do this?
I should have to get back to you on how much does it cost altogether. We were hopeful that it would be funded at a hundred million. I couldn't tell you whether a hundred million would solve the problem, but it would sure solve more of a problem than fifty-nine million dollars, simply because the need is so great. With fifty million people, or near fifty million people facing hunger in the United States, we have a big problem. And all of the food that we provide, which is well over three-point-five billion meals, is just a small part of what we're able to provide. The, the, the infrastructure is on two levels. It's, it's what I mentioned before. The one side is the refrigeration and the transportation, and our being able to harness it and keep it, and keep it safe, the food safe. The other side of it are the people who need to access this. In rural communities, it's much more difficult, but within the cities, it's a problem as well. We also have big challenges in, when we get donations, there may be a whole lot of one item, and it may be nutritious, but not everybody can live on carrots alone. So we need diversity, mixing centers, and a variety of things that make it possible for people to, to have access to all of this. I think that being able to harness more of the food that's going to waste would go a long way to solving the problem, but it wouldn't solve the whole problem.
Mr. Fink?
Yeah, I think that the good news is, there really isn't that much capital needed on the infrastructure side in the grand scheme for the recovery standpoint. And it's needed, and we've all talked about, need for information technology and infrastructure, like refrigerator trucks and refrigerator at food banks and places like that. In the grand scheme, that isn't a huge amount of capital. And you just even think, we talked about Uber for food waste. And that's really, when you look about it, it's sort of infrastructure light in that perspective. The other point you mentioned is the environmental aspect, and that there is a large need for capital for composting and anaerobic digestion. And that, you know, that requires a significant amount of capital. I guess I will say that the private sector is very interested in participating in that capital structure. Foundations and impact investors are very interested. So there's the opportunity for public-private partnerships. I, I think there needs to be some signaling from, from you all of what needs to be done, but there's very willing investors on the other side.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Your time has expired. I would tell the, the group that we are working on getting a screening for members and staff of Just Eat It. Great. And we'll keep everybody posted on that, so that all of us can have a chance to take advantage of that, of watching that experience and, and see what we can learn from it. Ms. Crawford, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I thank the panel for being here today. I want to switch gears a little bit. We had an awful lot of pushback from schools, superintendents, teachers, parents, coaches. When the National School Lunch Program rules changed back, I think it was 2012, it was, started being implemented that school year. And the complaint we got from school districts was just huge amounts of waste, where children were just not used to the menu items, and so they would essentially turn up their nose at what they had been offered. And, you know, the standards aside, the waste was one of the biggest issues. So administrators, or superintendents, rather, are challenged by trying to take their food budget and cash flow with general funds. Anybody given any consideration to how you analyze food waste in schools and what we might do to help alleviate that problem? Anybody want to comment on that?
I'll say one thing briefly. I think there's really great opportunity in schools, both in the cafeteria and in the classroom. And a couple people have alluded to other places where we've made a lot of progress in social change, and a lot of that's also things like smoking, recycling, where we actually talked about them in schools. So there's a really good opportunity to kind of point this out to kids. And then in terms of the cafeterias and the school lunchrooms, I think there's still some confusion, like so many things we talked about, around liability protection. So I think there's opportunity within even the Emerson Act to really clearly, with guidance, say to schools, "Here's how this also applies to you." USDA is doing good work on this. They've put out some infographics and information about opportunities to have sharing tables and donate food, but more can be done, definitely.
I would add that, the flip side is that the more we can do to kind of get kids to eat their fruits and veggies, the less waste there will be. And so I think the solutions are the same. And there's been a lot of documentation of efforts, like the, the farm-to-table work, and marketing produce to kids, and some of those things that, you know, recipes that make the food taste good. So it's not just sort of veggies out of a can that look drab or things like that, that can really help to both address waste as well as health and, and, you know, fruit and vegetable consumption. And also, I think the, the ideas around share tables in schools is, is very opportune, because, you know, you have these kids who are, you know, taking a full carton of milk because they have to take it and throwing it straight in the garbage can. And that is just a shame and a huge waste. And I think there's real opportunity for guidance, along with the funds that are delivered through the school program, to really direct schools to allow for sharing of that food.
Mr. Oxford?
There's a new program in Texas called Brighter Bites, and it's a unique partnership between food banks, schools, and growers and packers to provide fifty servings of fresh fruit and vegetables to students in at-risk schools for free. And this program introduces new products to children at a very early age, while providing educational materials to their parents on menu ideas for using them and so forth. Ninety-eight percent of the parents reported that their children ate more fruits and vegetables while participating in the program, and seventy-four percent were able to maintain that increased consumption after the program ended. So as Ms. Gunder said, trying to increase the consumption of fruits and vegetables would be a, a big help.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe our experience in other areas might be helpful here. We, we have a program that, that focuses on foods to encourage. And our experience is that even though we might think that there are a whole range of foods, grains and, and produce and proteins that are healthy and good for folks to eat, it doesn't mean necessarily that they will lean into that if their life experience was different. And we have learned from the work that our food banks and pantries have been doing, is that the way in which it's presented, the way in which it's talked about, the way in which it's approached, makes a big difference. So simply putting it on the plate, if kids have never seen it before, and adults for that matter, won't get us to where we want to go. But an education effort and encouragement presentation makes a big difference. It's, it's also true for people who walk into supermarkets. When it's beautifully presented, they lean into it and want to do it. We need to apply it also in this area.
Indeed. Just as an aside, in the time I have left, we actually had a hearing of this effect in my district, and, and collected a lot of comments to address the school nutrition program. And I think one of the most, I thought most productive comments came from one of the moms on the panel, who suggested that these programs be implemented on a gradual scale, that is, K through two, as opposed to K through twelve, and graduate that into implementation over time, so that children are, sort of, grow into, as you suggest, making healthier food choices. Do you agree with that?
I'm, I'm not an expert on whether that's the right age group, but certainly the notion of encouraging people and not forcing them, and, and making it a delightful thing to do rather than a required thing to do is likely to succeed. The particular age, I'll leave to other experts.
Thank you. Yield back.
Chairman, your time has expired. General aide from North Carolina, Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for being here. It's been really great testimony. But let me just take a moment to recognize my foster student from Greensboro, North Carolina, my home, Jamie Wharton. And if Jamie's here, she'll stand up.
Jamie, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Next week will be the one-year anniversary of the Addams Hunger Initiative that I launched in the twelfth district in North Carolina, to raise awareness of the high level of hunger and food insecurity in the communities that I represent. North Carolina ranks ninth in the nation, and my district, first in the state in terms of food insecurity. So we have a serious problem, and I've been concerned about that. Hunger is a consequence of not having a good-paying job that earns enough food to, to put on the table and to raise a family. And as some of you have mentioned today, developing food recovery as a business model will help local farmers stay in business, create jobs to help with the additional transportation and distribution of donated food to those who need it. My first question is to the North Carolinian on the panel, Mr. Oxford. Mr. Oxford, your testimony lays out several ways that your company and other members of the Produce Marketing Association are finding innovative ways to reduce food waste and to maximize the use of leftover produce within our nation's food system. So what support can both the public and private sector provide to, to farmers, to educate them on opportunities and incentives to move more food products that, that are not destined for, for market, to food banks?
Thank you, Representative Adams, and appreciate your support here in Washington, DC. We believe there's opportunity for greater education across the board. Our experience with L&amp;M has been very positive in working with the Florida Association of Food Banks and the Feeding America program and others. And ensuring that producers understand the options is helpful, but equally important in reducing food waste is educating consumers. We've already talked a little bit about some of the things. We've talked about the need to change behavior that one of your colleagues mentioned, and I think that's very critical from, from, if we want to make a, a real difference and move the needle here. Changing behavior, and our sense is, speaking on behalf of the Produce Marketing Association, that beginning that dialogue and trying to change behaviors starts at a young age. That's where we learn our, our habits and our values and so forth. One of the things that Produce Marketing Association has been involved with, including with the Partnership for Healthy America, and the White House as well, has been a program called Eat Brighter, and I should mention Sesame Workshop, which has provided their, their assets, their characters, for free to put on the packaging for, for fresh produce. So changing, having a collaborative dialogue and, and getting more people involved is critical.
Thank you. Ms. Aviv, several universities in North Carolina operate campus kitchens. These student-run organizations use university facilities to turn donated food into meals for those who need it. What federal laws protect campus kitchens and food donors from liability? What recommendations would you make to encourage more farmers and food processors to donate unwanted food products to food pantries and feeding organizations?
Thanks for your question, and also for all of the work that you do in this area. And as you know, the, the federal Bill Emerson Good Samaritan Liability Protection Act, which we've talked about some today, quite a lot, makes it possible to provide protection for people donating fit and wholesome food to a nonprofit organization. And it provides critical assurance critical assurance of liability protection to donors. And while there may be some ways in which it can be strengthened, the big challenge that we face is that too many people don't know about it, including on campuses. And the degree to which we systematically educate people about this is the degree to which I think that we'll be able to increase donations in a meaningful kind of a way.
Okay. Would Feeding America support being able to use funds from the Emergency Food Assistance Program to directly purchase leftover produce from farmers?
That is a very complicated question, because our experience is that, in fact, the TFAP purchases right now, with TFAP funds, we already do that. That's what we believe. And that we do it at scale. And that, at this point in time, for us to change that, we're not sure that that would be the right way to go. But that said, there's an opportunity for us to take a look at how to do it with smaller donations, because we're doing this at scale. And we would be very happy to work with you and others to look into that.
Well, thank you. I'd love to do that. Mr. Chair, you're back. My time's up.
General ladies, time has expired. Ms. Lujan Grisham, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks again for such a great panel in highlighting that while we need to do more, so that individuals and families are not so food insecure in this country. And I make this statement at every hearing, because until it's resolved, it hurts me every day to remind all of my colleagues and everyone who comes before this committee that New Mexico is still one of the hungriest states in the country. And every single day, I know there are children in my district and in the state who are some of the hungriest children in the entire country. And so the work that we do, that leverages, that makes sure that we're encouraging, as you do, incredible private work, as well as, I think, our responsibility to change a variety of systems, so that people really have the support that they need to be food secure, and to have all the other necessary basic issues addressed in their lives, so that they can be successful. And I know that this question's been asked about, we're limited in what we can really do and accomplish, because for every donation, there's an issue about getting it picked up and storing it. And far too much money actually is needed to do that. And in fact, I have a bill that says, look, let's put 100 million in, so that we're not asking food banks to decide between having food available for their families, or paying for the administrative, I'm going to call it administrative, or the other structural issues, which is storing and transporting this food. So I know that that's been, you know, asked, what else can we do? But maybe the thing to do is, are there any private groups who are looking at until, and I hope I convince my colleagues to support my request to put more money in, to not be borrowing or leveraging in this way, to be very clear that we need to pay for transporting and picking up and storing foods? I actually have a situation in my district where we had to say no to corn, because we let it spoil, because there was no way to go get it from the farmer who was donating it. There was no way for us to deal with it. Are there businesses or groups who are now looking at ways to maybe invest in the transportation and the storing, and their folks in the Feeding America environment that I can reach out to, until we get this problem resolved, in my state in particular or in the Southwest region?
Well, I would say there are a number of burgeoning businesses that are kind of addressing that problem through a private sector lens. So for instance, there's a company called Imperfect Produce that just started in California. And in just a few months, they have over 3,500 people subscribing to their produce box. They offer, that is all kind of seconds of produce. They offer it to people who qualify for SNAP at a reduced cost. So it's already reduced, because it's imperfect, and then further reduced, and it's delivered to their door, so you don't have the access issues. You know, they don't have to go to a grocery store that may not be near them, et cetera. And they're getting basically $20 worth of produce for $5 or so delivered to their door. So I think there are some private sector solutions like that, that are coming.
And I love that. Do you think that private sector solution, I'll ask them directly, so thanks for that heads up. But you know, the challenge is, and not that they couldn't figure it out in my state, it sounds like I'm diminishing, but when you're not urban, much harder to make those deliveries. And in a state where we have the worst economy in the country, the folks able to really do that and successfully manage that business model, it's been really tricky. Do you see ways for really challenging states, rural food deserts, not urban populations? If you're going to deliver a basket, you're going to drive 100 miles. Do you see ways and strategies that are being developed with really challenging environments like mine?
Yeah, you know, I would say-
I love that idea. Thank you to the panelists.
Earlier, we talked about modifying the standards for procurement. And I think, especially in your state and states nearby, there's so much, there's so much that's grown and so much that's coming in from Mexico that is getting rejected, because it doesn't meet the absolute perfect standard. And there's a real opportunity for less perfect fruits and vegetables being processed. It doesn't have to, they don't have to be shipped in refrigerator. They could be processed and then be shipped in a different form. And so to me, there's a huge opportunity to take a look at all of the fruits and vegetables that either are left on the farm, or are left somewhere in the supply chain, and do some value-added processing, and then be able to turn them around into rural communities.
All right. I really, I appreciate that. And I'm already out of time, but I appreciate these ideas and the chairman's continued patience with me. These are really important to feeding families in my district. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
General lady yields back. Turn to David Scott for closing comments, for behalf of the ranking member.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I said, this is a very, very good hearing. And I think we accomplished a lot in this hearing. I hope we can take that away. I am particularly concerned, Mr. Chairman. I hope we register the point that we really got to get our farmers, get our agribusiness community to get before this Congress and share what is happening. And I really think, because of our failure to deal with the immigration issue, from a labor economics issue, as it impacts food waste, which we see here, because they can't get the labor in the fields to get the food in the first place. And that is something we can do something about. And also, Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned, I think we need to coordinate a whole lot better with our food banks, and have this food waste in there, when it could be beneficial to our food banks. So the pieces of this is right out there. We just got to reach out and grab it. And finally, changing that human behavior. And, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned to me a very good thing there, when you whispered in my ear, something that you all had a saying in the Army. And I was, I said to you, that, if we took that to some television people and radio people, we could turn that into, you could grab hold and educate people. Would you share that with us?
Well, you're going through the mess line, and the mess sergeant would say, take what you want, but eat what you take.
Take what you want, but eat what you take. Do you know, I mean, that could be a great commercial. That could be a great deal. And who better to get on television to say that than you? We say that across the country. But seriously, Mr. Chairman, we got to change that human behavior. And I think, hopefully, we've touched some things on that. Thank the panel. Appreciate your coming.
I too want to thank our panel, and thank the gentleman for his comments. I want to thank our foster kids in the room. Thank y'all for being here today. I hope this has been instructive, but not just boring you to death. But we're talking about good stuff, and one of the more rare bipartisan exchanges we've had today, because I don't think we could find too many people who are in favor of food waste. It's a rare individual would be that case. I'd also like to get into the record the fact that several of you mentioned the tax deduction and how important that was. You gave credit in the omnibus bill, which, the much maligned omnibus bill, that many of us on our side of the audience got beat to death, because we were supportive of it. But it was actually in the tax bill. Both of those were negotiated together, the same thing. So I appreciate you, you know, helping us, those of us who were criticized for passing the omnibus bill. There were some nuggets of good things in there. I'm also encouraged, we're trainable. Look how quickly we adapted sneezing into our elbows. As soon as Elmo started doing it on Sesame Street, that blew up, and we all now do that as a matter of course. We faced water restrictions in West Texas because of the drought. We asked people to turn their faucets off while they brushed their teeth. That became a habit, and water usage dropped. Didn't change anybody's lives, but it helped a little bit of time. Every single day we went on, we announced that at 1:30 in this space, we'll have the Food Waste Fair, while we have booths manned by a lot of folks coming around to show the good work that's been going on, and to begin to highlight that. I do think their role for public service announcements and other things, to help people become more cognizant of it, and just sensitive to the idea that we don't throw things away. One of those other sayings from my early youth that I'm haunted by, though, is my mother would say, you know, you need to be a member of the Clean Plate Club. Well, that had mixed messages. But, because today I eat too much, and I'm overweight. But as a child, I needed to, my mother wasn't interested in us wasting food. So there are all these kind of things that we can be better at, and I'm encouraged by that. Thank all six of you for coming here today, sharing. Ms. Gunders, I think you get the prize for coming the furthest from San Francisco, but we do appreciate all the work that you do. It is a collaborative work, and there's only winners in this deal. And this is something we should be able to get our arms around as we move forward. Again, I thank our witnesses for being here today. Under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days. To receive additional material, supplementary written responses from the witnesses to any questions posed by a member, this hearing of the Committee of Agriculture is adjourned. Thank you.